Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock and we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting. Go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Dacus.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Lillard.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Norton.
Here.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Here.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Here.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Seals, Ray Seals. Commissioner Robert Seals.
Here.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Here.
Gentlemen, there are nineteen present, no absence. Y'all would. Commissioner Leggett will give our invocation tonight and after that if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Leggett.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all the many gifts you've given each one of us. Thank you for this beautiful weather that we ended up with today. Lord, please bless this meeting and bless each one of us and and give us the the knowledge and wisdom to do the county's business on behalf of the citizens that have elected us. Lord, thank you for all your many blessings upon not only us individually but our county. Keep us safe. Lord, special blessing upon those that are fighting to keep us safe and the liberties that we enjoy. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Would you please join me in pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is standing one nation. Thank you. I didn't see anybody in the audience. There may have been somebody come in. Is there anyone in the audience at the courthouse who would like to speak to an agenda item? Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and move on with commissioners on the agenda page. There is a motion. I would like for some, I'll read it and I would like somebody to make the motion and second it so that we can formally proceed with the meeting. The Fayette County Commission, in accordance with the Tennessee Governor Bill Lee's executive order seventy-three, has determined that having this meeting by electronic means is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Fayette County citizens in light of the COVID-19 outbreak. That the provisions of Tennessee Code annotated section eight dash forty-four dash one oh eight C, which addresses open meetings guidelines are in effect and the meeting will be conducted in a manner consistent with section nineteen of the Tennessee Constitution allowing monitoring by the press. Your emotion of that?
Will be adopted. Oglesby.
Commissioner Oglesby, do your second. Second. I'm lost. Who's made the second place?
Second, Goodrow.
Commissioner Goodrow. This should be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
All right, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes. Uh, those who came in at in your packet, are there any additions or corrections that we need to make to the minutes?
Commissioner Powers, I've uh moved that we accept the minutes as written.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do we hear a second?
Second, Dale Reeves.
Commissioner Reeves. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner George.
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard. Commissioner Lillard. Yes, all right, Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, the motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is um election appointments confirmations. The first item is election notary public. Those have gone through the clerk's office and have been provided to you in your packet. Entertaining a motion to approve.
Commissioner Reeves, approve.
Commissioner Steve Reeves, do your second.
Second, Goodrow.
Commissioner Goodrow. Again, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Debra Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motions passes nineteen in favor, none against. Uh, the next item on the agenda tonight is uh nine-one board position confirmations. Uh, in your packet is a list of the nine-one board member and I think it it did go through the safety committee and was forwarded on. Commissioner Rice, I want to make sure I'm correct on this.
That's correct, uh, Mr. Chairman, and the Safety Committee approved this list, uh, or at least recommended that the full commission accept these nominations.
And the reason we're doing that is because there was a period of time in there where we weren't sure exactly when somebody's previous uh position started and one stopped. So what I presented to you is a list of staggered terms as was originally envisioned on the appropriate time and they're supposed to be done in November. So I put tho- all those names and nomination for those period of times. Uh, entertain a motion to approve if that's all right. And we'll do this all in one sweep if that's all right with you.
Uh, Rice makes a motion to approve.
Second, Farley.
This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, the motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight is a redistricting committee. Presented, we adopted the committee last month. Uh, there were five positions on this. Just remind you, this is a committee that will work with the census data to uh equalize the districts in the school board and the county commission districts this year. Uh, we should get that information probably late summer, maybe early fall. Uh, the five positions that we put on the committee was myself and Mr. Josh Tapp, who's administrative of elections for the Fayette County Election Commission. We left three other positions open. One was county commissioner representative, one was a school board representative, and one was an at-large. At the uh, I believe this was at budget committee, I presented uh two names, a commissioner, I mean, Mr. Vip Lewis, former clerk ambassador and former county commissioner for that large position. And I've asked Mr. Willa German to serve as the county commissioner rep. Uh, did not have anything from the school board at that time and the school board asked to make a recommendation and I was hoping I would have a answer by now. They started tonight's meeting about six thirty. So I've got those two names I want to put in front of you and those were approved by the budget committee. And with that being said, entertain a motion to approve those if you don't mind at the same time.
Move that be approved. Oglesby.
Second, Rice.
Uh, roll call vote, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow. Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Mr. Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Uh, next item on the agenda tonight is financial reports. Um, the reports in the packet, if you'll just get with the appropriate official if you've got a question. Next item is a mayor's report and I've got several things and some of this you may actually want to make notes on your your face wrong because there's several things I think you might find interesting. The first item I got to bring to your attention, I wish, you know, I never like bringing bad news, but uh, Miss Sally Spencer passed away over the weekend. She was a school board member. Uh, I think she's had a long battle with illness over the last several years. She was a very active member of the school board and she's going to be dearly missed. She was, you know, had a lot of friends down that way. I like to count her as one. So just keep her and keep her family in your prayers and we will uh address this position next month since it is open. And I'll bring that through the proper committees and at the next meeting we'll we'll consider a replacement. Uh, the next item that I need to bring to your attention is our bond rating. Uh, we did well. When we went out to debt, part of the prob- part of the process is going to the bond agencies and proving to them that we're credit credit worthy. And uh previously we had a, make sure I get the proper one, uh, double A two, which was medium, okay. Uh, but and we've tried for last several times, well, last semi-eight years to get a little higher. This time we went through, we were, went to double A three, which is very good for our situation. Uh, some of the factors that helped it was the strong reserves you have, some of the low debt we've got on per capita and also the growth in the county. And as long as we're able to keep those three things sort of in check, we'll be in good shape. And I fully expect that we'll we'll keep that rating. So, but I want to thank y'all, y'all, y'all's hard work and working with us to keep the keep the budget in check and uh being able to do that. The next thing is the second part of that. Uh, we did sell bonds. We sold nine million eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth and our interest rate was one point zero six eight percent. We were paying two percent on that and the rate came in a little bit better than we expected. We're going to see about another ninety thousand dollars in savings. So we're good, we're we've done well so far with that. The next thing, we'll give you enough a date on the animal shelter. Mr. Ralster told me at the end of last week that he had correspondence with the title insurance company and they accepted what we sent them. So they're gonna, they're gonna, um, they're happy with the purchase and will insure it. So we're moving forward with the purchase of that property. Met with Mr. Ralster and he's been getting paperwork together to make sure that happens as as quickly as possible. And also I met with the folks at Spirit Architecture, Mr. Scott Rosinsky, to go over layout proposals. I sent that, sent some drawings out earlier in the afternoon on what he had presented to us. Those are very preliminary, so I'll give that, uh, put that in it, you know, as far as so that you don't think this is the final drawing. I hope this is going to be similar to it, but they're not exact. Uh, I gave him a five hundred thousand dollar budget and he's working at somewhere between a three thousand and thirty-one hundred square foot facility. Uh, we're looking strictly as a target date of sometime in August to start. Uh, we talked about how to how to move forward with the construction and he was suggesting we hire a construction manager, one that would work for us, who would not do any work on the project except for doing the bidding process and overseeing the project. And the I gotta do some more homework on it, but that seems like the way we might ought to go and that also may turn into something else we can do in some other county projects we've got look, we're looking at. Uh, sent out a little notice earlier today. I got a notice from the health department that everybody in West Tennessee is now eligible for the COVID vaccine if you're sixteen and over. Apparently, for whatever reason, West Tennessee, only about twenty to thirty percent of the folks are asking for the vaccine, whereas in middle Tennessee is somewhere between seventy, eighty percent. So they've got unused vaccine in West Tennessee and to get the numbers up and get the shots in the arms, they have opened it up to everybody. And uh, so you may, you know, my comments to the folks of the Department of Health is that they should be checking addresses. I doubt they're going to, so you're liable to see folks from all over the state of Tennessee and West Tennessee over the next few uh few weeks trying to get shots. But anyway, if you guts, if you know somebody wants it, vaccinefinder.org is a site you can go to and you can look and see where it's available, uh, everything from pharmacies to the health department and it'll allow you to schedule a time and move forward with it. And it's a very, very user-friendly site and I'd encourage everybody who has not looked at it to go to and just just take a look at it so that if somebody asks you, you you know what, know what the best place to send them.
Mayor Taylor, Commissioner Powers here.
Yes, sir.
I had somebody ask today, what uh versions of the vaccine are available here in Fayette County?
In Fayette County, we've got Pfizer and Moderna. Now, I did look on site, Johnson and Johnson is available at Walmart in Oakland, I excuse you, Walmart in Brownsville and about two or three Krogers in uh East Shelby County. So um, just go in there and it allows you to pick which version you want, if you want to, and uh send it, but they Walmart in Brownsville was the closest Walmart ahead and I'm not sure exactly which Krogers it was, but there's several in East, East Shelby.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And then the last thing is I got notice last week of some additional funding we're going to receive. If you've been keeping track of all the stuff going on in Washington, you know that they were putting together another package for the COVID relief. And we got notice of some funding. Um, can't say I've ever seen an amount this large come through my office, but we got noticed of a preliminary number. This is subject change somewhat, but it should be somewhat close. About seven million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We'll receive half of that within about sixty days. Within the year, we'll receive the balance of it. There are certain things we can use it for, certain things we can't. And as always, they're fixing to send the money without having written the rules. So we're going to put it in the bank and sit on it until we get something from both the state and federal government. Our funding looks like it's coming straight from the federal government, so we're going to make sure we have good contacts there. The cities, all the cities in the county also receive some of that funding. It ranges everywhere from uh about forty thousands up to about two and a quarter million. So they'll be getting their funding, as I understand it, through the state in some, in some form. The schools also will be receiving some funding through the same entity. I do not know their amount. Their funding, I believe, is also coming through the state, through the Department of Education. There may be a formula out there that they can estimate, but I don't know that that's been finalized either. But within the next month or two, we're going to have probably some decisions to make on how to move forward with that. And while I've got your attention on that, I do want to say later in the agenda, we'll be talking about fire trucks. I'm going to ask that you hold off on allowing me to issue debt until I can find out if I can use this money to pay for the fire trucks. If we can do that, we'll move forward with that and keep our debt, another reason to keep our debt low. I don't know that we'll be able to, but we don't have anything that says we can't at the moment, so um I'll be asking you to sort of hold off on that till next month.
Mr. Chairman, Goodrow here.
Yes, Sir, Commissioner Goodrow.
So we don't know what the stipulations are, uh, what kind of binding there is or strings attached until after we get it? Is that what you're saying? So if the strings are too much to bear, uh, do we have the option to return the money?
Oh, yeah. In fact, it was made very plain that A, we will spend it correctly, or B, we will pay it back. So and it will be paid back to the federal government and I'm sure there'll be interest and penalties and all the stuff we're all familiar with. So it will be, and I've had this conversation with Charles McNabb in my office about what to do with it and we're getting, I've heard some guidance from the comptroller. I don't know if it's been written down yet on how they want us to handle it. But in my view, I want this as far away from all the other money as possible sitting by itself, so there's no doubt about what it's used for or isn't used for. And uh, when we get this in, then we'll, we'll, we'll do whatever the comptroller has told us to do and we'll move it someplace where we can keep track of it.
Eric, Commissioner Powers here.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that this is possibly going to be tied to the recent announcement regarding that we will not be able to lower taxes. Would that be a correct assumption to make?
It is. You can take the, one of the things you can use this money for is some cities and maybe some counties somewhere in the nation have had revenues that have been lowered. So if they were, if they were missing some revenue, they can use this, some of this funding to replace that revenue. That's one of the allowed items. But you cannot take the revenue and then lower your tax rate. So it makes a little bit of sense, but uh they don't, they won't allow you to lower the tax rate. Now, you can use the funding to do things you're scheduled to do and maybe free up some money elsewhere that may allow you some some flexibility, but to flat out use it just to lower the tax rate, that's not allowed.
Further question follow-up on that. You mentioned something recently about the tax rate possibly going lower. Uh, would that affect your plan?
No, no, these are two different things and the, and what I described over the weekend to some folks is that the reappraisal plan is coming through and there will be a certified tax rate. That will actually bring in the same amount of taxes and I had several folks question me on that. Apparently I wasn't very clear when I talked with them, uh, that the amount of taxes we would be generating would be a some, be the same amount. It's just the rate that, the rate that is used to generate will be lower because it'll be a higher value of the county.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, sir. All right, uh, folks, the next item on the agenda tonight's Sheriff's Office. I saw Mr. Garcia, Deputy uh Chief Garcia here. Is he still in the audience? Yeah, he may have stepped out. Um, Public Works. Any
Haven't got anything tonight, Mr. Mayor, but um in case any of you are getting some calls and some reports of potholes everywhere, uh, we are just totally inundated with pothole requests right now. So bear with us, we're getting to it, we're doubling up, trying to catch up. So if any of your constituents call you, just, just let them know, we're we're trying our best at this point.
Okay. Any questions?
That's it.
Okay. Board of Education, Dr. Versi, Dr. Hamlin.
I know I saw her on here at one point in time. Mayor, uh, I, and I know that she was planning on attending and uh, of course, she was involved with the school board workshop tonight.
She is, she's on here. I see her name and she's just not unmuted.
Okay.
She may have stepped away. Or just so I can see, get on. There we go.
I'm sorry, I took a phone call. I apologize. What, what was the question?
Uh, nothing, just any reports. It's your time on the agenda tonight.
Oh, my time. Um, so I'm grateful for Mr. Harville. We uh, we've been really working hard and trying to um make sure that we are here to uh the guidelines set forth and we're really working hard on the budget. And so Mr. Harville has been really working overtime with that and um, so I just want you to know that that we are doing our due diligence to um, to make sure that we're following protocols.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Saw Ms. Barbara Parker in the audience. Does she have anything for the commissioners? All right, next item on agenda tonight's Development Committee, Commissioner Farley.
Development Committee met on March eighth. Present were Reeves, Powers, Mr. Walker, Seals, and myself. Uh, the first three things on the agenda, Public Works sales tax, um, Public Works budget amendment and uh the presentation of the four-year reappraisal plan are going to be handled by the budget committee. Um, also, uh, Mayor, the public works that received calls about repairs and you, we talked about the eight hundred thousand dollars that we are scheduled to receive and some of that are being used for potholes. Would you like to add anything else to that?
Nothing, nothing much of that eight hundred thousand dollars was in Governor's original budget there. And if you see a representative going to Nashville, either Senator Wale or Representative Gant, there's some rumors running around that since the federal folks have sent down the funding that the state may withhold or change or reduce that amount of money. And that funding has, is much more flexible than what the federal folks were sent to us, so um, we need to encourage them to leave, leave that funding that we've talked about in our budget. So um, and we, but we did talk about maybe taking a portion of it because it would not go against the five-year average for Public Works and maybe use it on some uh, for the roads, either buying more material or or some labor or whatever needed to 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 work on those. That's all.
Thank you, sir. And then the last thing is the Soul Regulation Board members' information meetings. Uh, it is ongoing. We're meeting with the Fayette County Director of Planning individually and that is ongoing as we speak. Um, and nothing new to report. And that, that's all of the business, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next item on agenda tonight's the Health and Welfare Committee, Commissioner Reeves.
This Chairman and our committee met March eighth. Uh, committee members present were Leggett, Perkins, German, Seal, Goodrow, and myself. Director Miller, uh, give us an ambulance report. He reported that we had three hundred and ninety-nine calls in February. If you extrapolate that out, we're increased calls through this year at eight point six percent increase. Uh, we were out of ambulances twenty-eight times with seven of those times there was somebody waiting. Uh, so we are going to have an increase in calls this year. He also requested that we look at purchasing a loading system, a cot loading system, automatic cot loading system. He thinks it's going to increase or help our personnel um with back injuries and and those things, help us with workers comp. Uh, we have in the budget enough to purchase two, so we'll take this up in budget just a little bit, but we're requesting purchase three. The budget that we have is because we did not buy an ambulance this year. We got that through the state in a grant, so we do have the money there. And then we'll purchase two more next year, next year's budget. So we'll take that up in a little bit. Also, we increased the budget for a household funding waste disposal. We're having more trash come through, so we need to increase that. And then, Mayor, you just give us an update on animal shelters, so we won't go over that again. So that's all we have.
Thank you. All right, next item on agenda tonight's Education Committee, Commissioner Dacus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet, and I'd like to join you in offering a little sympathy for the Spencer family and the school board also. She did an awful lot of work, and we appreciate all she did. I know present at our meeting were Commissioner Watkins, Norton, Reeves, Walker, Jordan, and myself. School Board had some, a lot of amendments for Scoville. Mr. Harville went over these for us, and, and none of the fund balance were affected. And we voted to approve these with Commissioner Watkins voting against to send these to the Budget Committee, and that's all we had.
Thank you. Next item on agenda tonight's Criminal Justice and Public Safety, Commissioner Rice.
Mr. Chairman, our committee met on March the ninth with Commissioners Norton, Perkins, Seals, Goodrow, and Rice present. Our minutes in the packet show Commissioner Leggett there, but I don't believe that he was there that night. Is that correct, Commissioner Leggett?
I was trying to get on, and I was having all kinds of problems with my iPad. I could not get to the zone meeting. So, sorry.
We, we do need, we need to correct those minutes, I guess.
I'll let payroll know about that, okay?
Sorry, Commissioner Leggett. The, we reviewed the sheriff's report as usual, and then we had some budget amendments and discussion of fire equipment and LaGrange Fire Department Agreement, and all of those things are going to come up later in the agenda with the Budget Committee and under New Business, so I won't go into those at all. And the nine-one-one board terms and confirmations have already been dealt with. So I think that covers everything that, that we covered on meeting. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on agenda tonight's Budget Committee, Commissioner German.
Yes, we met on March the ninth. Commissioners that were present were Steve Reeves, Logan, Oglesby, Ray Seals, Farley, Dacus, Lillard, Rice, and German. I'm not going to read the minutes. We'll cover everything that's in the minutes when we go down the agenda tonight. So our first item, five point two, is Budget Amendments Fund One-O-One. Miss Lane is cleaning up line item changes. Our Budget Committee approved it, but that was a different amount than what we have in front of you tonight. After our meeting, the mayor and the airport manager, Mr. Rusty Bliss, decided it'd be a good time to fill up all of our fuel tanks before the prices get even higher, which I think is a good idea. So it's a hundred and fifteen thousand hit to the fund balance instead of a hundred and eight thousand, but I make a motion, we approve it.
Motion's made. Do your second.
Norton, second.
And one little side note is on the airport, all that is going to be sold at a profit, so we'll be recouping that as we sell it. This is roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow? Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
All right, five point three, Budget Amendment to the General Fund. The fire department has received funds from an insurance recovery and sale of some old equipment. And this amendment just puts the funds in the line items to replace the equipment, zero change to the fund balance. It was approved by the Public Safety Committee and the Budget Committee. I make a motion, we approve it.
Second, Rice.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Rice. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Lillard?
You say yes? Yes.
All right, Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
Five point four is a Budget Amendment for Solid Waste Fund One-Sixteen. You heard Commissioner Steve Reeves explain the need for this increase because of the amount of trash that we have coming in. It was approved by the Health and Welfare Committee and approved by the Budget Committee. I make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Reeves. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
All right, five point five, this Budget Amendment is for Public Works Fund One-Thirty-One. Our superintendent, Mr. Daddy, has asked that a Budget Amendment be made to allow them to buy a new tractor and a side mounted mower. The amount is a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and it was approved by the Development Committee and the Budget Committee. I make a motion that we approve it.
Commissioner Powers, second.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Powers. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner Good, uh, German?
Yes.
Good Roger?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves, Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
Five point six, General Purpose School Fund One-Forty-One. You heard Commissioner Dacus explain these amendments. There's no change to their fund balance, and Education Committee approved it, the Budget Committee did too, so I make a motion, we approve it.
Norton, second.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Norton. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard?
Yes.
Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers? Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice? Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
All right, five point seven, this Budget Amendment is Fund One-Forty-Two, which is federal money. You heard Commissioner Dacus talk or speak to this item. That's just amendments that, that is no change to the fund balance. Education Committee approved it, the Budget Committee did too. I make a motion, we approve it.
Your second?
Norton, second.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Norton. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice? Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Pass.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Okay. Commissioners, motion passes eighteen in favor, one abstention.
All right, five point eight, this Budget Amendment is Capital Projects Fund One-Seventy-One. Funds are placed to cover the sheriff's cars and the fire equipment that was reviewed during the past budget. This was approved by the Budget Committee. I make a motion, we approve it.
Second, Commissioner Seals.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Seals. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
All right, five point nine is those cots for the ambulance. You heard Commissioner Reeves explain that they want to buy three this year. There's enough money in the, in the budget for two of them, and they want to buy two next year. Hopefully, it's going to save us some money on workman's comp and some injuries that we have had in the past. And the Budget Committee, the Health and Welfare did approve it, but the Budget Committee asked to have that Budget Amendment before us to view, which we have tonight, pays two forty-nine, fifty-eight thousand dollars. It'll come out of the fund balance of Capital Projects Fund. So, and also, they just sent it to the full commission with no recommendation, but I would like to make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Norton, second. Commissioner German made the motion. Commissioner Norton, second. Roll call vote, excuse me. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
Five point ten, our four-year reappraisal, reappraisal plan. Our Fayette County Property Assessor, Mark Ward, presented us this plan. The plan and cycle are currently what we are already operating under, but we have to vote on this every time of which plan we're going to use. The cycles can range from four to six years, but we feel like the four years is the best, probably more accurate, keeping the appraisals right. It was approved by the Development Committee and the Budget Committee. I make a motion, we approve it.
Oglesby, second.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second by Commissioner Oglesby. Roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
All right, five point eleven, the mayor informed us that last month's resolution capping the sales tax for public works, what they received, had the wrong amount in it. It had six hundred and fifty-seven thousand four ninety-nine. But this new resolution tonight corrects and adjusts the cap to the proper amount, which is five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. It was approved by the Development Committee and the Budget Committee. I make a motion that we approve it.
Second, Farley.
Motion's made by Commissioner German, second, Commissioner Farley. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus?
Yes.
Commissioner Farley?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Leggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard? Commissioner Logan?
Yes.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins? Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals? Commissioner Robert Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins? Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
Five point twelve was our proposal for the fire apparatus, and we, we did approve this, but the mayor tonight has asked us to hold on, see what this federal and state money does. Is that what you want to do, Mayor, just?
We need, we need to move forward with the purchase of it. We will have fun in either, we, we have fun in either through the debt issuance, like we proposed before the funding came up, or the federal dollars are, are available, we can use that, but we do need to go ahead and move forward with the authoriz- authorization for the funding. I mean, for the purchase, for the purchase.
Okay, if y'all remember that our chief, Hartfield, asked for four new pumpers and two tankers to go along with financing our debt. And that would fulfill the plan that we'd had to modernize our twenty-five and thirty-year-old equipment. And the savings from the debt refinancing would allow the purchases of equipment and still actually provide savings, so I guess just vote to approve to do it, but decide later which way to do it. Is that right? Is that what you want?
What we'll do is, if, if you allow me, is purchase, allow me to purchase and go and issue, move forward with the purchase, sign the contract. That'll get it started. It'll be anywhere between nine and ten months. Well, I take that back, chief's in the audience, but it'll be several months before we get it. And then, within the next month, six weeks, we'll know whether we can use the federal dollars. And, um, if we can use the federal dollars, great, if we can't, we'll go ahead and move forward with the, uh, just like we do with the bonds now. They'll just include that with the next, with the last sale of those bonds.
Okay, well, the Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee did approve this, and the Budget Committee also did, so I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Norton, second.
Okay.
Mister, uh, Mayor Taylor, Commissioner Powers here.
Yes, sir.
Would it be beneficial to offer an amendment giving you the dis- uh, detailing the discretion to use federal funds first if they're available, and if they aren't, to go ahead and use the bond as a second means?
No, we don't need, I don't need the authority right now, because what we'll, all I'm doing is sending a contract and basically issuing a purchase order for it. So, we'll put all the paperwork in order, and we'll come back next month, and we'll, we'll talk about how we need, we can issue the debt.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner German, second by Commissioner Norton, roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against.
Uh, the only other thing that we discussed that was in the minutes is a redistricting committee, and you've already handled that, mayor, so that's all we got.
Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, gentlemen, do we have, next item on the agenda tonight, reports of special committees, the Audit Committee met. And the findings, the only findings in our audit were from the School Board, commis- I mean, Dr. Versi Hamlet, the superintendent, and Mr. Vincent Harvell, who's Budget Director over at Schools, met with, with the, uh, Audit Committee. And went over the findings, they offered, you know, how they're gonna handle that. The Audit Committee accepted those, and the report is in your packet, I will need a motion to approve this and accept it.
Mr. Chairman, I move it be approved and accepted.
Okay. Commissioner. Commissioner Farley, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
For the record, uh, I'd like to, it's important to note that these deficiencies that were in the Board of Education happened under a previous administration of Dr. King. This has nothing to do with Dr. Versi Hamlet or her, uh, financial people.
This is true, this is true, in fact, I think they're getting their house in order now, as you saw with some of the budget amendments that are coming through, we're getting things some more straight, let's put it that way.
Thank you so much for that, thank you.
Okay, uh, motion is made by Commissioner Oglesby, second by Commissioner Farley, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Reeves, Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins. Commissioner Watkins.
Yeah.
Motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, is the LaGrange Department Fire Contract, uh, we talked about that in, um, Safety Committee, uh, but we didn't have anything in front of us, and we finally got the agreement from LaGrange. Uh, if you have, if, if you think we can, if you understand what it is, it's basically similar to what we're doing in Williston. Essentially, what we'll be doing is ensuring the building and equipment there, we'll be taking over the, providing a fire service. Uh, we actually approved doing this back in, I believe, November, but the motion we passed was basically very general. This is, this is the specific contract, and I would like to have a, a, a motion on that, and if you feel comfortable, uh, moving forward with that tonight.
Norton, so moved.
Rice, seconds.
Motion is made, second by, motion made by Commissioner Norton, second by Commissioner Rice, this will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Next item on the agenda tonight, uh, in your packets, we received, uh, this resignation letter from Ms. Sue Culver, uh, county clerk. Um, Ms. Sue's been with us for, I'm not gonna say how many years, but forty years, forty years. And, um, she's, she's made just, uh, some decisions and whatnot, and has tended her resignation. It is her last day, according to the letter, is June one. May thirty-first, her, she will serve through May thirty-first. Anyway, the re- the most, the letter is in your packet, we will need to accept the resignation letter, uh, effective that date. And, um, are there any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve, to accept the resignation letter.
Norton to approve.
Second, Commissioner Seals.
Motion is made and seconded, Commissioner Norton made it, second by Commissioner Seals, this will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes, with regret.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against. Thank Ms. Sue for, for her time here. She's not gone yet, but, um, anyway. We'll be, I, I hope everybody has a chance to talk with her over the next few weeks to a couple of months, whatnot, and, uh, as we move forward. Next item on the agenda tonight is, after that was to consider the replacement of the county clerk. The position is open as of that date, will serve until the next election in August of next year. Um, person needs to be somebody familiar with the office, so that we, we don't miss any, we don't have a learning curve on it. So, floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Norton.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have received several communications from constituents, uh, endorsing, uh, Ms. Culver's, uh, nomination. And, as, as bad as I hate to lose, um, Sue Culver, I'm gonna have to support this, this young lady, Ms. Burtz, that's been thrown up for nomination. And if she hasn't been thrown up for nomination, I would like to nominate her.
Yeah.
Move nomination cease, and she'll be elected by acclamation, Oglesby.
Norton, second.
Okay. Um, Shannon Burtz, names out there, motion to cease nomination and elect by acclamation, motion made by Commissioner Oglesby, second by Commissioner Norton. This will be a roll call vote. Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Commissioner Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard. Commissioner Lillard.
Mr. Lillard. Yeah. Yeah.
Take that as a yes, Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yeah.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins.
Yeah.
Commissioners, motion passes nineteen in favor, none against, uh, congratulations, Ms. Burtz, and we'll look forward to working with her in the near future. Last thing on the agenda tonight is a, um, resolution that's forward to me by Commissioner Powers. Um, yes, resolution in support of Marcy's Law, I hope you've had time to read through it. Uh, according to our rules, any commissioner can bring a resolution to it, to the commission, but, uh, if, or if more study is needed, then they can refer it back to committee. Uh, Mr. Powers, would you like to address or talk about the resolution, and I believe there may be a lady on, uh, if I hadn't lost her?
Yes. Uh, many of you know, most of us know Mary Ann Donovan, and her story is to all that has happened to her. And she, at the beginning of last year, went to working full-time for Marcy's Law for Tennessee, to have it enacted. And the reason I brought it directly to the commission, rather than going through the normal, uh, committee processes, it is of, uh, the time is of essence, it is before the General Assembly now for consideration. And even if it gets through this legislature and Ms. McKinney will, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, it still has to go through the next two-year res- uh, General Assembly, before it will even get on the ballot as a constitutional amendment. On this, uh, resolution is modeled directly after the Fentress County, uh, resolution that was sent in support of it. And at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Susanna McKinney, uh, she works with Mary Ann, and she'll be much more knowledgeable on giving you the information that we need.
Mr. Chairman, I, I hate to interrupt, but I, I would move to table this. Uh, we, we, I thought, adopted some, um, rules uh, that would prevent these things being brought to us, I'm sure Commissioner Powers didn't mean to ambush us, but that's the way it feels when something this important comes and it has not been through our committees. Um, I can't find, uh, uh, in any of my paperwork where we actually adopted these, but I thought we agreed that, uh, this, that these resolutions would come first to you and then be, uh, routed to the proper committees. Now, a change in our constitution, I think, is far too important to ignore our procedures. And that's what we're being asked to do. This, this, um, this, uh, constitutional amendment, but actually, we have a constitutional amendment already, has been in place since nineteen ninety-eight, when I was District Attorney here, and, uh, that, we've been operating under it since nineteen ninety-eight, and several statutes have been, uh, passed in su- in support of that. Um, but this impacts, uh, most impact is on the thirty-one district attorney's offices. It also impacts General Sessions Court, Juvenile Court, the clerks, uh, all the various law enforcement, the judges, the parole board, the prisons. And, and it has far-reaching, um, effect. Now, our committee, um, our Public Safety Committee has on it six people who are intimately, have been intimately involved with law enforcement. And I think we've got a variety of people on there, and it's, uh, it's a resolution which is opposed by the district attorneys, by all these other groups that I've, that I've mentioned, the judges group and, uh, various ones that are impacted. So, I would ask that this, um, motion be tabled until our committee can, uh, consider all the ramifications of this, um, proposed constitutional amendment. And it's not an emergency, there is something scheduled in a subcommittee tomorrow, I think, in Nashville, however, this, uh, this bill was filed on January fifteenth.
All right, let's, let's see if I can get a second to that table in motion.
We've had two, two months.
It's Logan's, that's it.
All right, okay. Folks, um, table of motions are non-debatable, and they go back to basically the direction of the, of the tabling, which is back to the committee. For more information and study, uh, this will be a roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Dacus.
Yes.
Farley.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yeah.
Leggett.
Yes.
Commissioner Lillard.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Powers.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dale Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve Reeves.
Yes.
Commissioner Betsy Rice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ray Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert Seals.
Yes.
Commissioner Bill Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Watkins?
Yeah.
Commissioners, the motion passes eighteen in favor, one against. Ms., uh, Ms. Susanna, you're on tonight and the motion's been tabled back to committee, but if you want to take just a couple of minutes to give a real nutshell version of Marcy's Law, I'll, I'll give you just a couple of minutes.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's good to be with you all. I appreciate the time, um, that you're taking to hear about victims' rights. Um, because the problem that we face in Tennessee today, um, is that there are a lot of victims who are oftentimes not heard. Um, their voices are not actionable and their legal rights are not, um, enforceable. So as Commissioner Rice, um, mentioned, we have a current crime victims' bill of rights that's in place in our state constitution. It was indeed passed in nineteen ninety-eight by an overwhelming eighty-eight percent of Tennesseans. Um, at that time, Tennesseans, I'd be willing to bet, probably looked at the rights that are enumerated in that Victims' Bill of Rights and thought, this is good. We want victims to be able to have the right to be heard, to have the right to be notified, um, to have the right to participate in the justice process after their lives are harmed by crime. Um, the problem that we see now is that those rights enumerated in that bill of rights are very selectively enforced. Um, right now, they are only enforced and at the discretion, um, of the fine people that serve our state and our criminal justice, um, system. And it's really enforced mostly for people who are victims of violent felonies. Um, and that's right, those people should be able to enforce their rights, but we also believe that all crime victims should be able to claim their rights as they're, um, laid out in the constitution. So what Marcy's Law does, all in the world that it is, is an amendment that, um, builds on that initial bill of rights and makes good on the, the will of the people as it was described, you know, as they voted nineteen ninety-eight and it loops in, um, victims of A and B misdemeanors. Um, so to kind of give y'all an example of some crimes that are not currently, um, covered by the Constitutional Bill of Rights, um, indecent exposure, um, domestic assault, first, second, and third domestic assault, sexual, sexual exploitation um, of an elderly person, stalking. I mean, these are really aggressive crimes that are often pled down from felonies, um, to be charged as A and B misdemeanors. Um, but right now, if you're a victim of those crimes, um, the, the Constitutional Bill of Rights does not apply to you and, and we think that it should. Um, also included, um, juvenile crime. We believe that if you were the victim of a rape, whether it is perpetrated by a sixty-year-old or a sixteen-year-old, um, you should have rights to participate in that justice process. You should have a voice to be heard. Um, and our amendment does this by, uh, adding an enforcement piece. So it adds verbiage, um, to the, to the bill of rights that says that a victim assert these rights. And the mechanism, the recourse that they're given is the ability to speak directly to a judge. And right now, because right now victims are not given standing in court, which is that permission to raise their hand and say, your honor, I have a right to be heard and it was not upheld. Um, so, you know, we see this as a common sense, uh, addition, a common sense improvement that's really in line, uh, with what the people of Tennessee already think is happening. Um, so we are, we, we covet your support. We, we need your support and we go before the legislature. Um, soon we go before the Criminal Justice Subcommittee and we are hoping for a positive, uh, a positive outcome there before we go to the full and then to the whole General Assembly. Um, as Commissioner Powers mentioned, we, um, it is, it is difficult by design to amend the constitution. We want to make the constitution very hard to mess with. Um, and that's why all rights we consider to be fundamental are found there. I'm guessing you guys would not be satisfied if your right to, um, free speech or your right to free exercise of religion were only found in statute. Um, because we know that the most fundamental rights, the ones we find most important are found in the constitution. And that's where we believe that victims' rights should be as well. So we've got to pass the, um, the legislature by a one-half majority this year. We have next session, we have to pass it by a two-thirds majority and then and only then be put to a ballot, um, the year of a gubernatorial election. The first opportunity to do that is in twenty twenty-six. So we're hopeful and we are looking to garner as much support for victims as we can across the state. And if there are any questions or if anyone has, um, concerns, they'd like, they'd like, um, references or, or context for this conversation, I urge you to reach out. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Powers has my contact info as well as Mary Ann's. Uh, so we are available to you all and, um, we hope, we hope that you guys will consider and eventually pass a resolution of support.
I appreciate that. Uh, and I know the legislative process goes through a whole bunch of committees, particularly one, something of this magnitude, so I'm sure it'll be discussed many more times besides tomorrow. Commissioner Goodrow, hand right?
Yes, when, when will it go before the full General Assembly?
Well, the first step is to pass the Subcommittee, Criminal Justice Subcommittee. It has to be voted out. Um, right now is, it is scheduled to be heard tomorrow. Whether or not it will, as you guys well know, it's a waiting game. Um, the agenda is full, so it could be tomorrow, it could be the week after that. Um, it could even, it could even be two weeks from now, depending on what that committee's schedule looks like. Um, and then it will go to the full House Judiciary Committee. Um, and if it is voted out of House Judiciary, um, then it will go to the full General Assembly.
Oh, if it goes through the process, um, us having this resolution before us next month would not be too late?
Uh, it could be, it could, so theoretically, um, we, yeah, yeah, the support is timely because, um, if it is heard tomorrow and then it is heard in front of the full committee the week after that, um, that resolution of support is really critical, uh, and for, for a full assembly vote before, you know, the legislature goes out. And I'm hearing rumors that the legislature is trying to go out before the, you know, at the end of April. Um, so, so, so time is of the essence, uh, but we don't know exactly what that timeline looks like. If, I know that's not precise and probably not helpful to your scheduling, but this is not an exact science, as you guys know.
I understand. I guess my next question is going to be when the session was going to end, but you answered that.
Commissioner Norton, you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Uh, Commissioner Powers or Ms. McKinney, either one, do you have a bill number attached to this yet? I'd like to do some research on it myself.
Yes, sir. It is HJR forty-four.
Forty-four.
And, and I, so I, um, I have a packet. I believe I sent it to Commissioner Powers and, um, and can have him share it with you all. Um, that's got bill language, it's got some, some verbiage, some, some myths and some facts, uh, and plenty of background information there. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to share that with the chairman as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rice?
Okay, I, I was going to ask that everybody read the constitutional amendment that was passed in ninety-eight, which is in, uh, Constitution, Article One, Section Thirty-five. And then read this House Joint Resolution Forty-four or the, the, um, number that, uh, Ms. McKinney gave and compare these two. They cover the same ground basically, except that this new thing adds, uh, the juvenile court and, uh, so several other things that Ms. McKinney mentioned, but it's basically covering the same ground.
And Commissioner Rice, if it's helpful.
Side by side to understand what's happening, I think.
So if it's helpful to you, um, in that packet, there is a color-coded version of the language that shows red. It shows what language is new. In green, it shows what language is existing and has that breakdown, um, that's visually, uh, efficient to take in. I'll make sure you get that as well.
Thank you.
All right, folks, um, conclude that. Uh, there is no more new business. Uh, there's several items in for information only, a sales tax letter, um, and also about a month. And please take a look at the sales tax numbers. Charles is on here and he needs to correct me, but I believe with another half month, we'll be at our, what we budgeted for sales tax for the year for Pitt County. And Dr. Hamlet, I think you've got close to another million dollars in sales tax that we didn't have budgeted, so you got some extra spending money over there. Yeah. So, uh.
I'm excited about that. Thank you.
We've, we've, it's nothing, I guess it's nothing like a pandemic to make money because if that's the case, then we've, we've really done it. But, uh, we've, we've done well, uh, this year as far as folks staying home and purchasing and with the state changing the online sales tax, it came at a very opportune time. But anyway, that being said, there's no further business. Entertain a motion adjourned.
Skip?
Sir, yes.
Um, at the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned we went from a double A two to double A three. It's actually the other way. We went from a double A three and upgraded to a double A two.
Okay, whichever way was up, that's what we went. All right, all right, thank you very much. All right, no further, uh, business, uh, entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor, please sign off.